This is the thing that we approved like two years ago?
No, it's different.
How long does it need?
Uh, in our, we need our, maybe.
Um, so, he's gonna be, we can, we can put him, he's not on here.
No.
We have a problem.
Well, he's not doing anything, he's just telling me what he's planned to do. You don't want to, you're just gonna want me?
Yeah, tell him to go home, tell him to see him next meeting, can't wait to see what his update.
He's gonna be.
Yep, um, thank you and we're very sorry.
Thank you. They said they, they're not gonna do that.
I can't wait, I'm so excited.
What are you excited about?
Special permit, variance, it's like non-stop, like.
Hey kiddo.
Yeah. Toby, Mr. Wick, you're free. One of these days, you're not leaving. Do you wanna take my father leave?
Two months, two more, two more months.
That is a direct. Please have me locked up so I can't do this. Tell me how I look, alright? Why not? I'm posting after I leave here. It's not legal? They'll put us on, we can't do this anymore.
We have to wait till we build our new Townsboro Hall Police Station.
Yeah.
Okay. If you comment on someone's notice, that's harassment.
This is why I don't work in HR. Alright, so Toby for the, um, nevermind, nevermind Toby. Alright, um, do we have camera people here or no?
Yeah.
They have that.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. I want they stay home. Alright, we're gonna get started in two minutes, did everybody sign in? Signing sheets over there, Toby doesn't like when people don't sign in.
Do you want their attention?
No, 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 no. I don't think they like me anyway, so it's fine.
See here, where were you saying something?
Oh shoot, I forgot. Look, all the things. I actually brought one.
Good.
Sheet. Alright, we're gonna get started. Um, I, it looks like it's 7:15. Current members, Dave Phemia Clerk, Charlie Whitkis, John Benson, and Raj Kumar. First item on the agenda.
Notice of public hearing, zoning boards of appeal, West Boylston, Massachusetts. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the West Boylston Town Office's 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. on Thursday, February 25th, 2016, at 7:15 PM to act on the petition of Mary Ann Dura, Vincent N. Pasquale, Michael A. Pasquale, Paul J. Pasquale, and Sharon A. Pasquale Godot of 393-395 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, Mass. for variance to reconfigure the property line between the two lots at 393-395 West Boylston Street, which will provide additional setback area for the house located at 389 Lancaster Street, and additional frontage for the houses at 393 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, Mass. Record title stands in the name of Mary Ann Dura, Vincent N. Pasquale, Michael A. Pasquale, Paul J. Pasquale, and Sharon A. Pasquale Godot of 393-395 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, Mass. Copies of the petition are on file in the office of the town clerk, 140 Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Phemia. I'm guessing you're here to speak on their behalf?
I am, Madam Chair. My name is George Curitz, I'm an attorney from West Boylston. My address is 294 West Boylston Street, West Boylston Street, and I represent the petitioners.
Okay. So, um, just, I just wanna make sure I understand, um, did you receive, Toby, did he receive the latest version from Town Council information that was sent over?
Um, well, whatever, whatever we had, I mean, and then he responded to that.
If I, there are two issues that I understand that was raised, either by the board or through Town Council. First dealt with the addresses, and, um, you'll notice on the assessors map, this is a copy of the assessors map, the properties are identified as 389 and 393, so there was an issue with addresses on the map. However, when they did the assessors' butters list, uh, the property that is identified as 389 on the map is in fact 393, and the property that's identified as 393 on the map is in fact 395. So, that just is probably the source of confusion relative to property addresses, is that the map shows one address, but the, but the properties actually have a different address. Uh, the second question that they asked is, why are we here?
That's what I'd like to know.
So, it's a great question, and I just, it's a technical issue, and I'm very concerned about fixing an issue. So, we're gonna open, if I, if I may, if Madam Chair is okay, if I can just go through the presentation as well. This is the assessors map that shows the configuration of the properties, of the lots. We had to start with the original configuration, back in the early 1950s, the Pasquals, Dominic and Italo brothers, owned the property, they divided the property into two lots. Italo took the green lot, Dominic took the yellow lot, that was the configuration in the early 1950s and throughout the 1950s. You'll see the lot size of .32 acres and .40 acres, that's what the lots were back in the 1950s. They built their houses, and sometime after this plan was done, they built the houses, and apparently they built the houses without regard to the actual property lines, because Italo's house either extends onto Dominic's property or is perilously close, within inches of that property line. And Dominic's property, house, actually extended onto the northerly side, onto Anna's property, quite over the line. So, this was discovered by them at some point after 1952, after the houses were built, but before 1960, because in 1960, they generated a new plan, which would've cured all the problems. So, they took a jog, they took some land from Anna for conveyance to Dominic, they took some land from Murphy on the south of Italo's property, and that was gonna go to Italo, and then they reconfigured the lot line in between the two. So that, the, so if I may approach, yeah, Italo's property was right up in this area, so they, they created this jog here so that, um, Italo would have setback. They created this jog so that Dominic would have setback from the property lines. The reality of it is Dominic's line was over there, and Italo's was right up to the property line. So, all that would've worked had they done the deed back in 1960. The plans were completed, but the instruments of conveyance weren't. So, title never changed until 1980, in 1970, when in 1970, Murphy conveys this small sliver of land to Italo, fixing the southern border of that property. So, that portion of this 1960 plan, this, this, this design reconfiguration was complete in 1970. And then, in 1976, Anna deeds this chunk to Dominic, fixing his problem on the north side of the property. And nobody does anything relative to the in-between, where the, where Italo's house skirts right up to the Dominic lot line. And to this day, the lot line remains straight. The legal description for this property is this. So, if I can show the board what the current legal configuration is, that's it there. And you'll notice that although Dominic's is within the, which is fine, you'll notice that Italo's is either right up to the lot line or, um, inches over it. So, this petition, and, so why are we here? Number one, we have to do the deed, we have to put the deeds on to fix the lot lines. Problem is, once I do.
Let me stop you there, so doing the deed has nothing to do, we're coming in front of the ZBA though, you can do that on your own, you don't need to come, 'cause it's before 1974, so you can do.
But the minute I do that, I'm creating, I'm expanding my nonconformity. So, these lots are grandfathered, but the minute I put this on, I'm, I'm expanding my nonconformity.
It's nonconforming because it's not within the setback from the property line?
Not within the setbacks to the property line, um, and, and I'll be, the lots are, although the lots, the lots, um, have, they satisfied the minimum requirements of zoning, we are changing the lot lines, so, so if you'll notice here, um, Dominic's property, I'm giving up .5, .05 acres. This is gonna be, this is not gonna be five acres, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a smaller amount. I'm giving up some land which would increase my nonconformity there. So, I'm creating, these are privileged lots, but I'll be creating nonconforming lots.
But, sorry, I, I guess I'm still kinda sitting back, 'cause it's not that they're gonna reject your deed, when you filed this, because it was, this predated, so.
They will accept the deed, there's no doubt, but what happens is that I cure the title, but I create a zoning problem.
What, can you identify which zoning problems you're going to create?
Sure. Dominic's lot will be, Dominic being the yellow lot, let's go back to what I'm trying to do. Dominic's lot, which will be the, um, final product. Dominic's lot will be half an acre, which is below zoning size.
Today.
Today, but I'm, but I'm creating that, I'm, I'm changing the lot, so I'm taking away a portion of his area, increasing his nonconformity. It's gonna have less, it's gonna have insufficient frontage.
It's gonna have insufficient frontage?
Well, under current zoning.
Why do you need to change the frontage?
Well, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm actually increasing, I'm increasing Dominic's, I'm decreasing.
But if, why do you need to change the frontage?
Well, in order to, in order to create this line, right now, the property line goes like this. So, in order to create this line, I have to take frontage away from Italo's lot.
I don't understand, but why, why can't the frontage remain the same and the, how the jog is configured be different?
Well, in order to, because it's, the, the line is right now over here, in order for me to, and it runs this way. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to restore the plan as to, I'm not doing a new plan, I'm just putting the.
But you could resolve that by doing a new plan, just having a different, the geometry different. You could start from the same starting point, and instead of having the, the bend, if you will, where it is, where the angle is, you could just put the angle in a different location.
If I do that, number one, I'd be, have to do a new plan, this, this would all change. I would still be, I'd still be changing zoning, I'd still have a nonconforming lot.
Still have the nonconforming because of side, but you wouldn't have a nonconforming, um, frontage?
Well, well, the lot's nonconforming as it is, it doesn't meet the minimum frontage as it is. Even with the 80, 80 feet.
Okay, I, so, okay, so the, the green lot is already nonconforming?
The green lot's already nonconforming.
Okay, I see. But the green lot, the frontage isn't changing to the green lot?
It would be under the new plan. In order to, in order to jog this thing out, in order to move this line this way, because right now, the line goes like this, from this area here like this, it's 10 feet over, 13 feet over here. If I can show you on the current legal situation. There's the lot line.
Right, what I don't understand is why, I mean, other than the fact that you've, um, this plan's already prepared, you're starting.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Please state your name for the record, and please, the gentleman behind, can you please sign in?
Apology, sorry. Part of Dominic's driveway was on Edlow's land on the front, that's why they decided to move that.
Okay, so the driveway currently is not on the, um, is not on the correct part?
The end of it.
Could you just show us, just, if, could you point to where the driveway is, just so we can get a visual of what, sorry?
The driveway is, uh, is over here.
Okay, so you're coming in there.
And that's why they wanted to give my father this down here for the corner of the driveway, and my uncle, the corner of his house.
Okay.
Could you resolve the driveway with an easement?
Theoretically, we could do the whole thing with easements, but.
Well, that, no, an easement wouldn't solve your zoning issue.
Well, if I, if I had given, if I had given an exclusive use easement, keep it as it is, it's a privileged, nonconforming lot. It was created, it was built on back 50 years ago, so I could give an exclusive use easement here, an exclusive use easement here. Your assessors office has the wrong configuration, they have the wrong areas, so what we're just trying to do is to make the legal, the title, match your assessors.
But if you did the easement, couldn't you go to the assessor? If the assessor's got it wrong, couldn't you ask the assessor to fix it, rather than getting a, a variance?
We could, we could, I just thought it would, it makes the most sense, so instead of, instead of Mrs. Pasquale owning this right up to the lot line, and then not have any area on the other side of her house to walk around her house, to make, we could give her an easement to do it, but to, the right thing to do, we thought, was to make the, fix what was originally designed. There was no doubt that back in 1960, when they did that plan, everybody intended that to be the configuration. I'm just trying to make the, the lots look the way that it was designed, approved.
Was this plan submitted to anyone? Where is this plan coming from?
The, which one, the 1960?
The 1960.
Oh yeah, it was done back in 1960, the only thing that wasn't done were the deeds.
So, was this plan filed with anybody?
It's done, it's, it's signed off, it's filed with the registry of deeds, it's been online, and I am certain that it was this plan that the assessors used to reconfigure their lot lines. The only problem is that no, no deeds were ever done on it.
So, if the town has accepted this, why isn't it grandfathered in?
Title. The town's accepted this, the town's, this is what was approved, but title hasn't changed. So, let's say for instance, these two people weren't related, and I, and this discovered, was discovered between them, and we said, okay, you give me 10 feet, I'll give you this land. They say, fine, then put the plan on record, it's no good until they convey the land to each other.
I understand that the, the conveyance portion of it, but I don't know why, if the title changes now, if the town's already accepted this, why it's not, why you need, why it's not grandfathered, why do, why do you need anything from us? If the town has previously accepted this, then why isn't it already grandfathered, and then you're just, you're, you're doing the title because those properties changing hands?
If, if they had done those plan, if they had done those deeds prior to the zone change, when this was done, that was the zoning, so it was fine at that time, but it's changed since 1960.
I understand that it's changed, but the town, as of that date, the town accepted this as, as the, as far as the town was concerned, even though there was, the title wasn't, uh, apparently changed, but the town has been operating under the assumption, the belief, presumably even taxing, based on, on that.
And, and that's what it would do, so you would, and that was the thought, kind of, has been going back and forth with us. So, technically, this is, this is what we have as your layout, so understanding there's not a title, that, the title wasn't done, but you don't really need to come before us, because that, in the town of West Boylston, that's your layout, that's what was approved. So, we, we don't have a, we wouldn't have a variance to act on, because that's your configuration of their property.
I just respectfully suggest that, I, I love that thought, if that were, if that were fine, but the problem is, it's not, you know, the law is, the law has been pretty clear that once I, I have to, I, I'm gonna be jumping out of the frying pan into the fire, I'm gonna be fixing the title, and, and zoning is still not, no, and I love the idea that you guys said we're not gonna enforce, and that makes perfect sense, and perhaps this is an abundance of caution that says, listen, I'm gonna go out there, I'm gonna make sure that I get a variance that protects this. But if I go to a, if I go to a, um, a, you know, to get a survey, taped survey of this property, I'm gonna show them this configuration, they're gonna say, that configuration wasn't the, it was, it was, the deed, it wasn't recorded, it's not a protected use.
But if you record it, then that would.
No, even if I record it, he's gonna say it was recorded subsequent to his own change. Now, I, I don't, listen, I don't like coming, you know, I don't like having to waste time coming for, for variances, but.
Assuming we need to do this, why is it a variance, not a special permit?
Because the variance, we are, we are varying the, the dimensional requirements of zoning.
What is the, what's the bylaw that you're trying to change? Because when you're changing frontage, that should be a special permit, isn't it?
While changing front, it's, it's when I'm going for a reduced frontage, when I'm going for, but I don't even have area, and even the reduced frontage requires more area. So, I, I don't have area, I don't have frontage, and I don't have setback.
Well, I, I, I'm getting, you know, it's more to the technical, but you need a special permit in order to reduce the frontage, not a variance.
Well, there's a special permit provision, there's two, you can get a, you can get a ver, you can get a variance to reduce frontage at any time, but, West Boylston has a reduced frontage special permit requirement.
Right.
When you have minimum lot, um, when you have a minimum lot width, and you have, uh, air, it's certain enlarged area. That's not the situation here. Um, I wouldn't qualify for a special permit anyways, 'cause I don't have the lot width, and I don't have the, um, the area that's required under the special permit, and recognizing that I could come in even without, you can apply for a reduced, you can apply for a variance on frontage, even if you don't qualify for the special permit, you can still ask for a variance.
Okay, have you, I didn't see anything in your petition as to what it is you've cited as you're seeking the variance from. Did I miss that?
I'm looking to reduce the, and reduce.
I didn't see what you want to do, what I wanna know is what, you know, you've asked us, you want a variance from a bylaw, what bylaw are you seeking variance from?
It would be the dimensional requirements in Schedule 4.2 of the bylaw.
What is it?
4.2, the dimensional requirements, under the, uh, the table of dimensional requirements. I believe that's the table of.
Yeah. So, what do we have for frontage now?
Frontage right now on the, sorry about that, on the.
Chair.
I'm sorry. Let's go over to the current assessors. Frontage requirement, frontage would be eight, 81 and a half on the yellow pos, on the green parcel, which is the Italo parcel, which is 390.
So, we're not even close?
Yeah.
Bear in mind, though, we're not looking to construct anything, these things are already pre-existing.
Alright, so let me.
Yeah, this could be the issue for us changing that.
What's the distance between, um, 389 and the new property line? What's, do you know the feet between those? Is rough, like a rough?
Just around 10 feet, I'm told.
10 feet?
10 feet.
10 feet.
I mean, if you look, prior to 1976, this was the lot line for, for Dominic's lot, it went right up through his house.
I suppose you have a copy of what the zoning, with you, what the zoning was in 1960?
I do not, but I know zoning has increased in size.
No, I know it's increased in size, but, um, you know, it's not just, what's the angle on that change? 'Cause one of the issues here, it doesn't look like it's that much, but we have, part of the touting bylaws deal with, um, it can't be less than 75 degrees, which it seems less, or it doesn't seem.
Which angle, this angle here?
Yeah.
It's almost 100.
It's not so close.
Oh, oh, almost, probably like 150.
Yeah, it didn't look like it was close, but.
Toby, did you receive any emails or feedback from our, the building inspector? Any of them? No, did anyone provide?
I haven't gotten anything from him.
No, I just wanna make sure it wasn't something we were overlooking.
He was gonna come tonight, but.
I thought he didn't work here anymore.
Bentley Turb.
The new, the new building inspector?
Bentley Turb.
Bentley Turb, okay, so, to be honest with you, I think.
Feel comfortable voting against.
I, I think that we probably need to get a little additional information, 'cause at first, my personal opinion is, I saw it, is you could just go and file this, 'cause you had the right paperwork, and file with the town of West Boylston needing deeds. Understanding that you're changing it, and there's only gonna be, say roughly 10 feet between, you know, property line and house, the angle's also gonna be less than 25 feet, the frontage is much less than we normally, I think I need to, I think we would need to kind of get an opinion from our current building inspector to provide you, um, and maybe look at these. These are what's in our current packet that you provided, correct?
Yes.
So, I don't see these lines, that's the only reason, it just looks a little different.
But they should be in there, they should be in the packet.
And you're not looking to construct anything, the houses are just as they're saying, just as they are, you're just looking to be able to file the deeds?
That's correct, without creating a new problem.
Without creating any additional problems, and to make sure that it sticks if you ever had this survey.
Right, and I don't want, exactly, and I don't want to, you know, as I said, jump out of the frying pan into the fire, you know, creating a nonconformity, um.
And making it, okay.
And making it worse, you know.
I'd also ask if you can, um, provide the board just, I, I, the gentleman that's right behind you, I'm sorry, I forgot. He provided us, Mark, so provided us where that driveway is, providing us just an additional, even if you took a picture and emailed it to us, just to see where that line, how it's gonna, where the driveway's gonna be, 'cause I'd like to provide that also to the building inspector, um, and just have them come back with some additional information for us, because at first, my thought on this was.
Why me?
Thought maybe you just wanted to come and talk to us. That does happen, actually, people do come and talk to us, but.
Only to Christina.
Only, only yet. So, I thought this was very easy, 'cause I just figured you could go down and file, you had all the paperwork. That I saw, and our town council commented, you had the paperwork you needed on file, but I understand your point, that you're concerned, once you do file it, if someone ever went to survey, they wouldn't, they wouldn't accept that.
These lots, right now, are privileged, nonconforming, even though the house is probably an inch away from the line. The minute I change and put a deed on, I'm no longer, I'm no longer privileged, I lose that privilege.
I thought privileged went with grandfathered.
It does, as long as you don't change it, or increase the nonconformity. So, it's privileged, it's privileged in this configuration, I mean, it's, it's privileged like this. The great, see, you see this, this is the privilege, the clause, you can see right there, that house is right up next to the line.
You have a constructive easement right now, don't you, if it's there, if it's crossing the line?
I might have adverse possession, it has been, you know, you know, it's, but then again, if it's an inch over the line, then I don't even know what I'd buy.
Well, I guess you'd still have adverse possession.
Yeah, so, I mean, theoretically.
It's been open, it's been notorious, it's.
And, and I could've done it with easements, you know, with exclusive house easements. And I could've done it with easements, you know, with exclusive house easements, it's family members, they get along great, I just, it just appeared to me, and the problem is that, this has been in the family on both sides since the nineteen-fifties, no one's ever mortgaged it, no one's ever deeded it, now, they're looking to sell this lot to a grandson, he's getting mortgage, and for the first time, somebody's looking at the title, and they're looking at this configuration, and they're saying, oh my God, I gotta get a survey out there, I'm gonna have a house over my property line, or within an inch of the property line, and my, my legal description doesn't match the assessor's maps.
I think now that you've explained it, it'd be helpful to have some, because it was sent to town council, the town council didn't understand what you were-
And I think it's because we didn't have all the information. Now that you brought the intention that there's more information involved, now there's a different story.
I'm happy, you want me to send a letter to supplement this, to let it to the board?
And just outline, so, with the understanding, so there's the frontal issue, there's-
The area.
The area just itself, so the amount of space or footage between that house, and now what would be the new property line for the grandson, grandson's lot, so, I think that, I think a few of those, having that information makes sense, sending that, and then have, we'll have town council, and also we'll have the new building inspector review that. I think that makes more sense. When you had first said it, I just assumed you were all set, and I wasn't sure, but I think, why don't, would you be comfortable with sending that information, and then our next meeting, it's the third Thursday of every month normally, coming back, and we'll be able to give you that information, we'll provide you back and forth communications?
I'll have that to you early next week.
Okay.
All right, and then I'll be back, yeah, third, uh...
Toby, do you know the date?
Oh, is it St. Patrick's?
St. Patrick's State.
March seventeenth.
This is in Boston, we don't get a holiday.
Does that work?
That, um, that looks right, we don't have to vote for those, we never, is there anyone, I do wanna open it up, though, to public comment, 'cause we do have people here, so is there anyone here that wanted to speak on this subject? No. Yeah.
Mark, question for you. Okay.
Can you introduce yourself and stand up, please?
Marfray, Chair of Planning Board. This was done in nineteen-fifty, and then again in nineteen-sixty. The zoning laws were, I know, totally different, okay, but now we get the additional information that the grandson wants to buy this property. Now, if this is property that's been in the family for, since the fifties, we're talking almost sixty years now, actually sixty-six years, to be exact, I would think that that would all be grandfathered, so I don't, I wouldn't think that it would-
I think it's exactly what he's saying, is it would be grandfathered if it didn't change anything. I think that's the dilemma that he's in, is that he wants to sort of get it up and up, but when he does, when he goes to just file and say, I'm using my nineteen-sixty A and R, but he's, the date of the new deed is today, it sort of fudges that up, I think that's, that your point came across, that was the problem, and I think he's, I don't know how to solve it, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what the legal way is, but it sounds like he's going about it a nice way, which is to get the variance on the new thing, so that once it goes through, it's there. I don't know if that's the right thing to do, but it's sort of a weird timing situation, an A and R from a long time ago, and a current date on a deed.
Fact is, the A and R was done in nineteen-sixty, you'll notice that they didn't do anything, even with the A and R plan until nineteen-seventy, so, I mean, they, they just went out of their way to, uh...
To sort of slow this down.
So was this found when, because now the grandson's buying the other lot, so a survey was done, and that's how this was?
So, when they, when they ordered, when the grandson comes in to buy the property, we had to do a title, so I had to find a title, it comes down to me, I had to find them, I can't find in the registry deeds, 'cause it's before nineteen-sixty, so I had to go back and check even further back, I says, I know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna cheat, I'm gonna go on to the West Boylston assessors, I'm gonna find out what they have as their deed. They gave me a deed from the nineteen-fifties, I say, great, I look at that deed, it gives me a plan reference, I take a look at that plan reference, I marry it up to the West Boylston assessors, I said, my outlines are different, what the heck happened here? I run it forward, I find the nineteen-sixty plan, not recorded until nineteen-seventy, I see a few hodgepodge deeds in nineteen-seventy, one in nineteen-seventy-six, and then the most important issue wasn't resolved, which is the interim line, you know, between the properties, and when I strike the line back where it legally is, I'm running through Etallo's house, I'm like, oh, I gotta get a variance, so that's the reason why I'm here, so.
All right, so you're good with, so you're gonna follow up with us next, you're gonna follow up with us next week, some additional information, we'll send that off, and then I'll also, we'll also send you notice of the next meeting and the times scheduled.
So you're not, but just to be clear, you're asking for both a variance and a special permit?
Just, just the variance. I think the board, the board's inclined, the board is entitled to give all of his own belief necessary, just under a variance. Even a reduction in frontage, which this board has the authority to do, instead of a variance, just under a variance.
If that's correct?
Well, I know the special permit accounts for reductions in frontage, but I, I think this, it's not relevant, necessary to discuss that now, we can, I think this should be submitted to town council, just to get a...
Okay, I, I would agree with why a variance-
That'd be great. That would be great.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. Did everyone, I know I saw some people come in and didn't sign in over there, can you just make sure you sign in? Yeah, so, I messed up my homework. So, moving on, next item on the agendas.
Notice of a public hearing, zoning board of appeals, West Boylston, Massachusetts. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the West Boylston Town Office's one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Massachusetts, on Thursday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven forty-five P M, to act on the petition of Mark Elzapiti-
Elzapiti.
Elzapiti, thank you. Eighteen North Main Street, West Boylston, Mass, for a special permit to buy, sell, and store used cars at eighteen North Main Street, West Boylston, Mass. Record title stands in the name of Laura Elzapiti, six Loring Way Sterling, Mass. Copies of the petition are unfilled in the office of the town clerk, one forty Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. Is everybody here?
So, can I have the petitioners that filed, please come up and state your name, your address for the record? Is it only you?
It's just me.
I'm not gonna try to say your last name, but-
Elzapiti.
Elzapiti, okay.
Yeah, it's not too bad. So, my name is Mark Elzapiti, I own a building at eighteen North Main Street in West Boylston, and I'd like to give you just a little bit of a thumbnail sketch about how we arrived at this point. I realize that there's a lot of Ts that haven't been crossed and Is dotted, I recognize that, but just a thumbnail sketch, I own an antiques and collectibles business, I have in that spot for almost thirteen years, and the business over the last ten years or so, antiques-wise, has continued to slide, so I looked for other ways of supplementing my income. When I'm in a home as an antique dealer, and I'm purchasing the contents of the estate, in some instances, there's a vehicle there on the property that I would purchase. When I purchased the vehicle, I, because I'm not a dealer, obviously I'd have to pay sales tax, number one, register and insure it, because the potential buyer would wanna drive it prior to purchasing it. As an antique dealer, when we're buying items for our inventory, we're tax exempt, so we don't pay a sales tax on that, we do pay a tax at the end on the profit when we sell an item. So very recently, I had the opportunity to purchase a nineteen-forty-nine Dodge pickup truck out of an estate, which is an antique, twenty-five years or older is considered an antique with a vehicle. So I went to the registry of motor vehicles, I said, I'm an antique dealer, I am tax exempt, I'm buying this for inventory, for resale, and they said, absolutely not, you need to have a car dealer's license in order to be tax exempt. So I thought, well, I'll apply for one, and here I am, basically. I did read a couple of memos that came through, that I'm certainly lacking in a lot of areas relative to providing information from an engineering standpoint and a legal standpoint, so, I guess what I would ask, based on what I've read here, is that I could have a continuance, hire an attorney, and an engineer, and go through and see if I can't answer all these concerns that have already been raised. A couple other things, if I may. When, when I'm talking about a car dealership, it's not, it's not a Herb Chambers type of thing, it's a very small lot, I would be purchasing a handful of vehicles a year, one, two, three, maybe four at the most. One, they would only be stored one at a time on the premises, and they would be sold via the internet, a person would make an appointment, they'd come down, drive the vehicle, and we'd exchange papers. So, it's not this thriving, booming car business, it's an antique dealer who's buying estate vehicles for purposes of resale, as to supplement my current income.
Does anyone else have any questions?
So, you just, you just wanna postpone it?
Well, I, I mean, I would throw myself at the mercy of the board, I'm not really sure, after reading, I got a memo from Toby, from, looks like the planning board, that goes through, yes, all these, a list of concerns, of things that I hadn't provided this, I hadn't done that, this is my first time doing it, so, having read this, my initial response was, well, maybe I shouldn't even bother trying, because this is quite a tough road to hoe. You know, I'd like to think that you're business-friendly in this town, and that you'd work with me to try to, to overcome these obstacles.
So, I did, I asked Toby to, on the letter from the planning board, I asked Toby to send you, so you'd be prepared to kind of look these over, 'cause what was submitted to us was very, very small, and it said, car dealership, or, and so my first thought was, you were looking to open up a car dealership at this location?
I understand.
Um, so, I personally think, I don't have, I don't know if you're ready to give any of this information that's been listed on here?
I'm really not, and I, I don't think, quite frankly, and I could be wrong, that the forms prompted for all these things, 'cause I'm quite surprised that it, that this is required, however, you know, my intent is to comply, so, I guess, I mean, and again, I would ask for your input, my, your advice would be to hire an attorney, hire an engineer, and, and work through these concerns, and come back at a later date, I would guess.
We can't give you advice as to hiring an attorney, you know?
I would recommend-
You have these issues you need to overcome.
Okay, so regardless of what I just said, these concerns need to be addressed.
I, I would recommend reading this thoroughly-
Sure.
-and reading our current zoning bylaws.
Okay.
And then come to your own opinion on what your next move forward would be. I would say, that would be the first starting point, I think, that you would, I would have you do, just so that you could understand exactly what was in this letter. They referenced some areas, they clearly call out, it's great, they referenced some areas in the zoning bylaws, so it'll make it a lot easier for you to go in and really look through that, so I would suggest doing that.
Sure.
I don't think we have to vote on, maybe-
I just make it clear for the record that you are requesting that we continue this. This is originating with you.
Yes.
Now, do you want to, I, I would say to, you, would you have this ready by the next meeting, are you thinking, or do you wanna have this continued out, maybe? To sixty days?
To be on the safe side, more like sixty days, I think would be fair.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll just say to the April meeting?
I, I think that's, that's good.
So, Toby, can you, at petitioner's request, this permit will be extended out sixty days to the April meeting. I would say, what I would like to do, 'cause I also see, there's a room full of people here, and I'm guessing they're not here to look at me. She wants a special permit, I think. So, I am gonna ask, so with that on, I'm, I'm just gonna ask if you would step back into a seat, and I'd like to see if there is some...
I just heard an email that says the audio is not working on the TV, I was just gonna get their attention and tell them to fix it. Kind of walk through the meeting.
You said no, would it make a difference?
You want TVs.
They're watching you on TV? That's amazing.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
And, I mean, we have it printed out in, as one of the emails, but the petitioner sent us a letter requesting an extension, because this is already beyond the sixty-five days since it was filed. Does that affect any of this?
So, who, so, so, we probably do need him to submit something extending it past that time, so what he's agreeing to do is, what he wants to do is continue this out till the sixty days, the April meeting, whenever the April meeting will happen, to that time. So, would you send this evening an email to the Z B A, asking for a continuance till the April meeting? Mark, are you all set with audio now? Can I have people?
Toby, please make sure it's reflected in the meeting minutes, that the petitioner has requested, in the request originated with the petitioner.
Okay. Yes. So, I would think it's important, though, I'd like to take a few minutes and have anyone come up and give public comment on the thought, well, on this agenda item. Is there anyone here that has come to speak on that issue?
Hi, my name's Ben Hebert, I'm resident twelve High Street, directly across the street from Watermark Antiques, and I was just curious if the, the kind of restrictions that Mark had outlined, it with his, you know, one or two or five cars a year, can the board, can that be outlined in the zone, in the, in the ruling that the board would issue, as far as, you know, the volume of cars, or how many can be placed on a lot at any given time? Are those type of restrictions available as part of issuing a permit for something like that?
It could, but the problem is, you know, enforcement.
Enfor, so-
Who's going to enforce it?
So it would be our zoning enforcement officer, but, understanding your point, I, there are items that we can put in, if this was to ever go through, in to say, you know, no more than four vehicles can be on the property at a time.
And is that-
So it doesn't turn into, I know what you're thinking, so it doesn't turn into twenty vehicles?
Right. And if this type of permit is transferable, if Mark was ever to sell his property and/or his business, would the permit to sell vehicles transfer to anyone else?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So, on that, oh, sorry.
Pat Barry from Laurel Street, seventy-two Laurel Street. I think our main concern was that it was posted, used car lot. Well, let me tell you what, they come sixty-five miles an hour down that street, even though it says twenty-five, and that, we pictured a whole line of used cars, and it's the historic district. Where would the people park, where would, you know, but now that he has explained it, that it is for these one to four, five vehicles that he purchases, that turns the whole thing around, and I think our, you know, thoughts are a little bit differently, because as, we know his lot size, and it isn't all that big to be storing a bunch of used cars for sale to the public, so, going the route that he was going to go, seems more reasonable than, than opening up the lot, and that was our concern, mainly because, of course, the church parking lots across the way-
Yep.
And that would probably serve as a customer parking spot, which would then cost the church money to put up a gate to keep people out, so.
Makes sense, that's mostly why we're here. All right, thank you. Did she speak on behalf of everyone, or is anyone else? Wow.
We'll be notified the next meeting, by the same thing via letter.
Yep, so, we'll notify you of the meeting, I think, um-
We don't send it out.
We don't send it out. Oh.
Good day, one ninety-five Crescent Street. I'm here for the historical commission, I'm not a butterer, neighbor, or whatever, but I just wanted the board to know that that is historic district. is a historic district and is such that it, it's been on the register for twenty years, and it would be nice to preserve that area of town for what it was meant to be preserved for to, it's all, the only area that is left of what was originally West Boylston, and it's a, that whole community is mostly all original houses. Robert B. Thomas House is in the area, and to have, now, I understand too, it's not what it said. I think it should, maybe should have been qualified as antique cars and not used regular, I know antiques are used, but still. I would just hope that you would take that into consideration, that it is an, is a historic area, and there's probably about thirty buildings included in that area. And, I don't know if you have any questions about that, but I thought you should know. Oh, it's very good. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
No? Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Just, let's, can everyone look at their April? April's the last one, I understand.
Twenty-first.
So, the third Thursday in April is...
Twenty-first.
Can I make one other statement, if I may?
Yes.
Okay. Relative to the fact that it's a historic district, I don't think anybody's more sensitive to that than I am. I bought the building about thirteen years ago and put two hundred thousand into lovingly restoring it. So, you know, I'm acutely aware of where it is, and quite frankly, if this moves forward, you'd never know there's a car dealership there. We're talking about one car, two or three times a year in the back, you know, there's no flashing signs, no wiggly men, nothing like that. So we, you really wouldn't know it was there. So I just felt compelled to say that, that I'm sensitive to the historic nature of the district, and I've certainly contributed to, I think, the betterment of it.
Okay. So our next zoning board meeting...
Before you do that, I am a butler. I've been there about twenty years. I can vouch, Mark has fixed it up. My concern would be the same thing.
Can you give me your, I'm sorry, your name and the...
Bruce Dickinson, sixteen North Main Street.
Thank you.
I've watched Mark fix up the building as well, and actually restore it and keep it historic, which I agree with. My concern would be the signs, the amount of cars, because I'd be directly affected by it by people walking in my backyard. And you say enforcement for a number of cars, I would have no problems enforcing it. No offense, Mark.
No, no. It's easily enforceable because when you do a car, you do a title. So, you know, it's not like something is happening in a backdoor situation.
I don't have an issue, I understand he's trying to make a living, I understand the business that he's in is tough, and it's tough, you've got to follow the Internet and all that. The signs, the squiggly men, the volume of traffic, those would be concerns of mine as well. You know, a crosswalk right there to even the church parking lot would possibly help from Mark's standpoint, and even the town's standpoint, because people do fly down that road. There's no way to access one side to the other. And those are things that have to be looked at as well.
And I'd say on that topic, and Mr. Benson had brought this up, we would, we would consult town council just on, to make sure that we could put a restriction on the number of vehicles in there. Not saying that you would ever violate that, and I'm pretty sure you would enforce that, but just to make sure it's something we can actually do and write it.
Sure.
So...
I don't want the flashy signs and the squiggly men and all that stuff at all. I have no interest in that.
Off the top of my head, I'm thinking, questions that I would like to know from town council is, are authority to restrict it to no more than X number of cars? Would that be, number be one, two, or whatever? Limitations that only antique cars may be sold on the premises, and, which I think you've said, only antique, and also no signage, which, you said this is all going to be done by Internet, so if that's the case, you wouldn't need a sign advertising any cars for sale at that location.
I think the DMV, this is, this was the first leg of the race, if you will.
Sorry, thank you.
The second leg involves the DMV and the state police, and quite frankly, in reading their bylaws, if you will, they do require a sign, you know, I mean, I'm saying it would be something tasteful like the one that I just spent six thousand dollars for in my business. Yeah, something tasteful, not flashy.
It would be limited to the antique only.
Those standings, thanks.
Two thousand, yeah, cars. You can't wear them.
We'll have to talk about those. I'd rather have it limited on the number of the year.
I'm not sure.
Can I just ask a question? What is the number of parking spaces you currently have at this building?
In the front, I believe there's either four or five. In the back, I'd say it's maybe ten. I don't know if they park two on the fence and then six on the side. Something like that. I mean, I'm estimating, certainly there's asphalt in the front, and there's divided lines, you know, four to five.
That's something else you need to be able to provide because it's not a, I understand why the kind of business you're running, but the town has definitions for this, so it's not a, we can squeeze five cars in as you can get along the fence.
Right.
There's, there's a definition for that.
No, I would say conservatively, four to five in the front, and probably six to seven in the back.
We've also, just to make sure, we've also asked the Board of Health to weigh in on it because they were mentioned, the Planning Board memo, so I don't think we've received anything to date, but once we do, that would also be distributed to you.
They should get a little update from what's going on tonight so that they know it's not going to be, you know, ten cars on the back and repairs or something.
Yeah, because of the vehicles. They won't let us pay the lot across the street, so, with the gas and the, that's why they took the soccer field back.
So why don't, um... Do you own this property?
Yes.
Mr. Fumia thought you did not own this property, so it's just...
Because it says here, it says the recorded title stands in the name of Laura.
That happens to my wife.
Okay. So that, the building and the land that the building is on is in her name and not your name?
Correct. I mean, that was dictated by our attorneys. The house is in my name, the building is in her name, so it's, that's the way it is. But she's on board, she was going to come tonight, but...
I understand that, but the thing is, and I think we have to contact town council, I'm not sure if you are authorized to ask for the special permit because the property owner is not in your name.
Okay.
So, that would be one of the items when you come back. She would actually need to be the one requesting it.
Okay.
Very good catch. All right. So, I'm giving...
We're not trying to discourage you.
No. I just want you to have...
It's just that we want to make sure that it's done right because if we give it to you, then somebody else comes back and say, hey, well, you know, the title's not in his name, it's in his wife's name, why wasn't she the one that was doing it?
I totally agree.
So we just want to make sure that, since you asked for a postponement, she's the one that's going to have to submit the paperwork along with you. But she's going, has to be the proponent asking for the special permit. I believe that's what town council is going to tell us.
April twenty-first, this will be continued till April twenty-first.
Okay.
If you needed continuance past that, you need to supply it to the board, written, Toby, to the ZBA email. I would also suggest talking to the building inspector in town as well.
Same time on the twenty-third, seven forty-five maybe?
Seven forty-five.
So I should have my wife submit the request for extension to Toby? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
All the paperwork is going to be...
In her name.
In her name. The special permit, everything. Sorry.
No, no.
Welcome to marriage.
Yeah, wow, twenty-seven years of inclining. But if I may, just get your opinion. Am I better off, your opinion just started from scratch, than asking for a continuance? I mean, I'm asking for your opinion, my first time.
You want to be one more time?
So...
Now that I know what's required from the planning board and from other boards, et cetera, I wonder if I'm not better off just...
Because arguably, I think, nothing is supposed to start correctly, and it should be dismissed.
So, I have to agree, I was just sitting here trying not to. So I, yeah, so I think that, agreeing with you, I think it should be dismissed just because it's not filed correctly, it's not filed by the person who the property is dated to. The information provided was vague and looked like you were opening a used car dealership when in fact you're really not doing that at all. We can waive the fee for this because it just, it was not filed correctly.
Now, will they have to be allowed, you know, another thousand envelopes of real amount? Oh, my God.
We want to make sure the butlers have been notified. That is very important.
But haven't they already been notified?
Well, no, because if you, it'll be, it'll be starting from scratch.
And it will have the actual information in it, providing them exactly what this is going to be. So it will, what we can do is provide the, waiving the fee for you to reapply, but contacting the butlers is not something we can...
Okay. All right.
And that raises the question for us for today. One of two things can happen. He can request to withdraw, and we can vote and approve that, or we can vote and approve it or deny it right now in order to end this, but we have to take some sort of vote.
Would you like to request that the board withdraw this?
I think that's best.
So Toby, can you make sure that's in the meeting minutes, that the petitioner is requesting to withdraw the special, special permit?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. I hesitated on that, no. Without prejudice. And we will, we will waive if he does, his wife, his wife reapplies, we would waive the fee, but they would still need to contact the butlers.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I'm, I'm motion that we accept the request for withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we, Toby, do you have a vote sheet for Mr. Fumia? All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Next item on the agenda, Board of Trustees, Afra Terrace. So, well, it's on here, so we have to.
You have that thingy?
No, I'm not banging that. I just, I get what you're saying, but because it's on here, I can't just... Um, one second, I got me. All right, so just a moment, I'm just going to wait for everyone to...
Okay.
Go into the hallway and speak. Thank you very much. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the Board of Trustees of Afra Terrace. It's a follow-up on the as-built plans that were submitted by the developer. We do have an email from, do you want to read off the email that we received from the...
We received an email today stating that the trustee that was going to attend tonight is sick, and the property manager, Andre Austin, from Ruining Properties, has a family emergency, so they want to postpone this meeting. So, it's up to the chair on what she wants to do.
I don't actually make the call. So, on this, I'd say, right now, we've not received anything, so we don't take things during meetings. And this as-built would need to go through conservation, conservation, so they would need to approve it before it would come to us. So at this time, I have no update on the as-bills. We've received nothing to date except for this. So, it is my opinion that this should be continued to our next meeting, which is...
March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth, Thursday, March twenty-fourth, at seven fifteen. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda...
Can I do this for us?
They cannot be accepted during a meeting, they have to be submitted prior to a meeting.
No, for our next meeting.
I need them to go through the conservation, them be signed off, to be brought to our meeting in a, March twenty-fourth.
Since I was here, I have the recorded permit for the other project. Can I give it to Toby? It's not for public care, it's just a recorded permit, copy of it.
Let's resolve this issue first, so, stand by.
So, yeah, just, just a second. So on this, we're going to continue it to our...
Next meeting.
March twenty-fourth, with the understanding that it's going to be, before it would come in front of us again, it would need to go through the conservation...
Commission.
Commission, thank you. Commission be approved, and then it would be seen in front of us, March twenty-fourth, but it would not be seen unless that had happened. The next item is you want to give...
No, no, let's finish this one.
Okay.
I had a meeting with the conservation, I gave them the plans, they had requested me for the snow storage areas to be shown on the plan, and it has to be stamped, which is ready. I have a copy of it, which I'm going to give to conservation, next meeting, I think they should be all set.
Okay, so I'll wait to hear from them for the next meeting. Thank you.
And your question now is, this is the amended and restated?
Amended, restated permit, which is recorded, I was supposed to record after twenty, twenty days of appeal.
Yep.
It was done today, so I was there, so I thought I'll give you a copy of it.
Wonderful.
And a letter to the ZBA also, saying that all the, we can start the thing.
So do you only have one copy?
Okay, so this already was submitted to the town clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm just sort of, because everything needs to go through the town clerk, so I don't want to accept something that wasn't submitted to the town clerk. But you did, you did.
Okay.
I was just saying, as a general principle, you did exactly what we want. We don't want to receive things that haven't gone to the town, but you did all that, so it's all ready.
Okay, so Toby, do, Toby, do you have a copy of that, or?
No, that's what you're trying to do.
No, okay. All right, so, could you give this to Toby? Toby, could you make sure that we get a copy of that? Thank you very much. Yeah, if you could do that, that would be great. All right, so that's good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So Toby, you'll make sure that goes with all the ninety-four North Main Street stuff, correct?
Right. Now, I mean, everybody has the, we say the permit, but do you want it with the...
Yes, all of it together.
That one right there is the one that's been filed, though, so that one is the one that matters.
All the others, this is your...
This is like the...
The holy grail.
The gold.
But is it that, I mean, everyone wants a copy of it?
It, well, he's going to send it to you via email, so you can email that up to us.
All right.
Because that, that's going to, that...
But that document you're holding is the one that needs to be kept with all the ninety-four North Main Street stuff.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so Toby, is there any other miscellaneous mail or paperwork that we...
Yeah, I have a few things.
This is going to be the most speaking ever.
Well, that decision has to be signed, the, um...
Oh, at you.
The main two cards is because, yeah, I think we'll do a signature... I made two copies, because, yeah, I think only your signature was needed when it was printed out. This is the same thing, it's just that he had signature placed each person.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, we've only gotten Jaya's signature on it, we saw it.
Okay, this was emailed one out.
I think it's, I'll write that right.
Okay.
Okay, so that is all set. Okay, and then, well, there were a couple of emails, about the reschedule thing. I emailed it, he didn't react to my tone.
It was only today, though, right? Yeah, so it's only been like an hour. We give him a little bit of slack.
Isn't it, I mean, it's like a reschedule.
Is he all paid off now? You voted yes, huh? Yes, it is. Yes, she did. She did yes.
I feel like you're just bullying anybody. Okay, so, I, I know that one.
All right, then, you know that invoice from the other time that we said Nancy knows about it? It was from the H.B. She knew nothing about it. So, I sent an email to Wayne to see where we are with our invoices, because we have like so many invoices that were overlapping, so he's, he sent that, but he says he's gonna get more information, just like a negative thing, and he didn't understand it, but he is working on that, see exactly what we still are, we agree.
And can you work with David on that, since he's a clerk, he's, he looks at the financials, so just make sure that he's, he's up to speed on that one.
And, I mean, I have another, I don't know if anybody wanted to see that, I got the updated...
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone wanna see that? Do you have anything else?
So, should I take this?
Yeah, do you wanna take those two back?
Yep.
You keep it, you keep it?
No, this was just that certificate of no appeal that he had. I didn't realize that they were gonna do something like that. I mean, that was just a, we stayed with the decision.
They, no, it has to be, so that, so if anything ever happened, and this was delayed again, that, this is what, this is very important that it was on file, because we didn't have it.
Talking about the amended and restated.
Like, this is, this is a very, so it has to be approved, reviewed, that's why we're through this process.
Before, we had all those problems about which one are we using, which one are we using, and there was the big issue as to whether or not the ZBA had all of its paperwork from over the years. That's why that can't be lost, because that is now the controlling document. So, if we find ourselves back here in two years, and people are running around saying, well, what, what is the permit that we're acting on? It's that one. That can't be lost.
Like, and with this, this is very important to be, like, so it stays with that, kinda what you have. This says that the document that was with it is what the building inspector, everyone should go by going forward.
I guess, I just didn't understand, because the public really was not notified about that, of that decision. So, how could they have been, like, an appeal period, if...
The public was, was notified about it, we had a whole hearing on it. We voted and approved that amended and restated permit.
They read through it.
Okay.
I was gonna say, because she attended a few, and we read through it, any kinda changes, and then the documents to it. So, I think, I think we're good on that part. I know what you're saying, though. It wasn't like we mailed it out.
Okay, that was, that was it.
You haven't gotten anything else on any other special permits or anything that's coming up?
Not yet.
Okay. The solar, the solar panel, that's coming, and that should be within the next couple of weeks.
If that does come, you can put that on the agenda for our next meeting in March...
You did put the stats on the...
March 24th, if they do submit a solar. All right, so, on the next item, so, meeting minutes from 1/28/16 meeting. Do I have a motion?
A motion that unless there's any changes, I didn't see any, I make a motion that we approve the minute meetings from January 28, 2016.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we...
Any opposed? Okay.
Before we secure?
This isn't the Navy, we don't secure here.
No, you do.
I don't even know what that means, so...
In other words, before we close out the meeting. Okay. CPTC has a training session every year in March at Holy Cross, and there's a whole bunch of speakers that come, and there's a bunch of topics. Well, this year, there's 17 of them, 17 topics, and it's on the 19th of March, which is a Saturday, and I think, and I'm hoping that the chair will agree with me, that there is one item on that list that basically pertains to us, and it's Chapter 40B, what does, who does what, when and why. And the session will trace the life of a 40, Chapter 40B development from project eligibility through the comprehensive permit process to final approval, construction, and ongoing affordability monitoring. Roles and responsibilities of the subsidizing agency, the zoning board of appeals, other town officials, and the developer will be viewed, together with the prime, primer on state regulations, guidelines, and policies, and the differences between them. Now, the person that's gonna speak on this, one of them, is Catherine Lacy, which happens to be the person from Mass Housing who we sent that letter to.
Thank you for that information.
And I think it's very important that we go, because we've found out in the last, at least I have, in the last seven, six to seven months, that there's more responsibilities that the zoning board of appeals has on a 40B project than just issuing the comprehensive permit and giving the guy, you know, the developer, whatever. Now, there's more things involved.
No, it's a very good point. All right, so thank you, thank you for letting us know. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We're so moved.
We're gonna do the, yeah, what was this?
Yeah, what did you want to put on here now?
The, this is the...
Yeah.
Request to withdraw...
The various.
Special, um...
Withdraw special request, special permit.
Request withdrawals, petition for special permit on 18 North Main Street? Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
And we, if you reply?
And...
That wasn't the motion that was made, and he also, I don't think we could put it in this document.
But it's gonna be in our meeting minutes, so it just can't be put in...
Okay.
Now, do I have a motion?
What letter?
Yeah, you did that.
Yeah, that's already done. Third time's a charm.
I must have signed it as the chair for everybody.
This is your motion.
That's why I was saying that.
You're a little late to the, the party here.
You, you're busy talking to the cable people, I understand.
Yeah, I know, well, because nobody else is really tired, are they?
There's nothing wrong with that.
So, request to withdraw petition, special permit for 18 North Main Street, without prejudice?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes.
More center agenda meeting?
Motion made by Raj, second, made by John, all in favor? Aye. No opposed. Thank you, the meeting is, the ZBA has been adjourned. Please shut these off.
Eight thirty, that's amazing.
Eight?